Well, it's the witching hour of seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakewood City Council for May 4th to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Bran Sutter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Now we'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance. Given the circumstances, note that public comments are only accepted via mail and email at this time. If you have comments, they should be sent to Brianna Schumacher, cityclerk@bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. That's B F C H U M A C H E R at cityoflakewood.us. If we have received comments before the meeting, they will be forwarded to us if they arrive by 6:00 PM. After that, they would be forwarded to us later. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments today?
Mayor Anderson, you did receive two comments in your city council agenda packet. They can be found on pages 163 and 164. Those comments were received from a Mariana Ross as well as a Judy Brown. No other comments have been received.
Okay, thank you very much, and we have those to refer to. Now we move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of April 13th, 2020. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 20th, 2020. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $1,885,803.41 for the period of March 14th, 2020 through April 15th, 2020. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,470,96.36 for the period of March 16th, 2020 through April 15th, 2020. E, motion number 2020-22 approving the 2019 Transportation Benefit District annual report.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson and seconded by, I believe that was Mr. Whalen, to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We now move to public hearings and appeals, Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2020 carry forward budget adjustment.
Public testimony on public hearings will, under the COVID rules allowing for special proceedings under OPMA, only be accepted via mail or email at this time. Comments on this should also be sent to Brianna Schumacher, clerk of, uh, city clerk at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. If comments are received up to one hour before the meeting, they've been provided to the city council. Comments received after that deadline will be presented to the council after the meeting. Madam Clerk, have there been any comments on this public hearing?
Mayor Anderson, we have received no public comments or public testimony on this public hearing.
So seeing as there are none, I declare the public hearing closed. Move to resolutions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Given that you allowed for someone to send comments post this meeting, how does that affect closing the public hearing? Right at this instance, or is it your intent to allow a period of time such as 9:00 PM or something for someone to still send a comment in?
I actually did state it differently than I stated under open public comment. It stated that it would, received up to one hour before would be received by us and after that would be provided electronically and then close the hearing. I don't believe we can leave a public hearing open. But I.
So that there is no, as of now, there are no more opportunity to submit a public comment unless one came in in the sentence between 6:00 PM and closing the hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now move to resolutions. Resolution number 2020-05, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2020-05, adopting the First Amendment to the fiscal year 2019, July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, annual action plan and an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act Citizen Participation Plan.
Thank you. For this, we have Ms. Kraus.
Program manager Jeff Gumm will be joining us for this item.
Okay. Mr. Gumm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I wanted to present to you a resolution for the 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment. Also included in that is an amendment to the Citizens Participation Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds and seeking council input on our economic development proposal, which is what we intend to amend the 2019 plan for. So I guess, give you guys a little bit of background. It's a little bit of a different year than we're used to this year. Typically, we come to you all once a year and do an annual action plan and go through that process. This year, we've got a couple of different concurrent processes going. So we've got what's before you tonight, which is the 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment. So we're basically going in and changing the existing 2000, or the existing manual action plan which we're working under. It expires in June of this coming year of, in June 30th. The other process that we have going is what we've seen recently is the five-year consolidated plan. So you've got the 2020 to 24 consolidated plan going as well. So there's a couple of things going. It's unfortunate that we have the CDBG COVID need that we have with our community, but it does complicate things and hopefully we'll get through them and I can bring clarity to both processes. So as I mentioned tonight, I wanted to discuss the 2019 amendment, the proposal before you. There's a couple of different options. Option one, option two. The proposal would be to fund $350,611 that the city is receiving as part of the CARES Act for COVID-19 businesses or businesses that are impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So the, the original time that we came, I'm trying to remember the date, oh, April 13th. So that, we did come back to council April 13th. Mr. Buhr and myself discussed some of the CARES Act funding that we had seen coming down the pipe. There's, there isn't really a lot of clarity in the CARES funding. There's still, there's still some ambiguity from HUD. We have not seen an actual funding letter. We've seen funding amounts. We haven't seen any dates in there. There's been a little bit of, I don't know, there, we've, we've had some, some follow-up with HUD staff and even HUD staff is a little bit unsure as to when these, these funds are actually going to hit localities. So we're, we're all kind of working on the same moving target going forward. So what I wanted to bring to you tonight is kind of the, the proposal and some of the staff research that, that we had done to develop the, the business loan program. So what, what we would be proposing would be a small business emergency assistance program. And again, that would be the 300 and roughly $51,000. Of those funds, $325,000, $325,611 would be used to fund either a loan or a grant program. And the $25,000 of those funds would be used to fund an administration pool to, to manage that program. The administration pool would, would basically cover things like marketing, program monitoring, publishing, some things that we have to get out to the sub recipients that, that would be receiving these funds as businesses. The other thing is, is when, when we do loan monies or grant monies to businesses or anyone, there's, there's some admin time that goes into monitoring from a CDBG perspective. And our monitoring would be specific to jobs created or jobs retained. So when we, when we loan monies, the, the CDBG goal is a low-income individual benefiting through job retention in this case. So there's, there's some follow-up after loans are made to ensure that the businesses are in fact retaining jobs for individuals. The timelines that we're looking at, this is a kind of an expedited process. The, this annual action plan amendment for 2019, HUD allowed a number of waivers. When the, when the CARES funding came through about a month ago, HUD realized in order to get these funds out as quickly as they could, they couldn't follow their old rules. So amazingly enough, HUD kind of got a little bit ahead of themselves, which is a good thing. Relieved a little bit of the red tape and some of the processes. So this process specifically has a five-day comment period versus a typical 30-day comment period. And then it, it released some of the issues with the whole public meetings and, and some of that. So it's, it's a, it's a much more streamlined process to get the funds out. That being said, unfortunately, we still don't know when we're going to get the funds. We, we are operating on a May 15th, somewhere in that ballpark deadline is, is what HUD is proposing, that they will get us some of the timelines and some of the expenditures to us. So the proposal that, again, that we're looking for would, would fund businesses up to $10,000. The businesses would have 10 or fewer employees. The assistance could be, we're proposing option one would be a loan. It would be a 0% no interest deferred loan for payments, sorry, payments deferred up to 12 months. Businesses that would be assisted, we would, we would tie the assistance to a number of employees. So what we were proposing is, is a $2,500 loan per employee. So depending on how many employees one was applying for, then you could, you could max out at $10,000. If someone came in with two employees, they could, they could have a $5,000 loan and so forth, up to the $10,000. The businesses would be required to have a physical location in the city of Lakewood. So it would, it would be specific to bricks and mortar sorts of businesses we're loaning to. We would want to limit the loans to one time for a business. So if, if an individual had multiple businesses, multiple franchises in the city of Lakewood, we would limit them to one loan per ownership. Businesses would have to, clearly it's, it's COVID-19 funding, so they would have to be impacted by the COVID-19 epidemic. So whether that be business closures or impacts to their bottom lines through reductions in income, those sorts of things. They would have to document that for us as well. Businesses would have to be operational for at least one year, so one plus years they would qualify. And then we would, again, we're looking at job creation, job retention, and we would do marketing for this program with special emphasis in some of the Hispanic neighborhoods and some of the Asian neighborhoods.
For Lakewood businesses, this would be another option for the city of Lakewood. The the documents that we've provided for you, I wanted to make sure that you guys were council members were all aware of of kind of what what what's what in front of you. So there's there's a three specific things that were provided. We we provided the citizen participation the CDBG. I'm having a rough go with this thing. The citizens, man, citizen, whatever it is. CBG citizen participation. Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act Citizen Participation Plan. There we go. Missing one word. Sorry. That is is a included for one reason in two thousand or sorry, in the in the 2019 Annual Action Plan HUD allows us to do kind of an expedited process. In order to do the expedited process, the citizen citizen participation plan required one update. And that update was to allow us to do a virtual public hearing. And allow us to take and publish our annual action plans via the web. And via social media, so Facebook and those things. In in years previous to this, the only way that we were able to do this process was an actual meeting in front of individuals. We had to provide the documents, actual hard documents at the library into City of Lakewood and those places. So the citizen participation plan allows us to do that. That's a HUD requirement. So the language that we have provided in that document is is just that language. It's a it's a process to allow us to do it virtually. The other documents that we included, there's the 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment. It's a very large document in the in the agenda packet. I believe it starts at about 100 and page 103, 104, somewhere in there, and it runs about 40 pages. That is the actual 2019 Annual Action Plan that we all approved last year. The language that is the amendment is specifically italicized and underlined. So the only thing that we're changing would be the language that's italicized and underlined, and that is language specifically adopting the Economic Development Emergency Business Loan Program or Grant Program, whatever that may be. All of the other language in there is just language that was adopted previously. It it's a HUD document. So what what you do is you take what was already approved, you leave it there. And just keep adding to it. So you you end up with one kind of bulky cumbersome document in the end, but that's the process for amending that. And then the last thing would just be the the resolution. We we have to approve this. Obviously, it's a it's a HUD process. So they they wanted to prove via council resolution to approve the annual action plan. The citizen participation plan and and the business loan plan, however that may go forward. So hopefully that explains the documents, the process and what we were proposing. Option, I guess I didn't go through your option two option. Basically, what what we're seeking is either supportive option one, which would be a loan program. Or option two, which would be a grant program. The this, as we discussed this, myself, staff, Mr. Buhr and and the city manager, looking at kind of where we're going and and what's going on in the in the economy. It who knows what's going to happen in the future. The the thought behind the loan program was if this recession continues into the future, a loan program would allow the city to recoup those funds. We could use them in the future for the exact same loan program. We could do any other loan program that council chose. You can you can reuse those to assist businesses. You could reuse those to assist low income households in any way you so chose. So it's it's it is an opportunity. If the recession does continue on to to recoup those funds and use them again. If you choose to use a grant program, then it's obviously it's a grant program. There would be no repayment of funds. So those are the two options. I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council, Mr. Wayland.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Got to figure out where my clicker is here. Mr. Gum, I had a few questions for you on the the opportunity, option one versus two, loan versus grant. So as you indicated, if the funds, for example, the way you've outlined it were repaid after 12 months. Is it your opinion that the CDBG rules would allow us to utilize the corpus of those funds perhaps in the next year for additional small business loans in our community?
Yes, they would.
Okay. The other thing I have seen is that other loans, like with the city, the PPP loan with the SBA have a job retention sort of qualification. Is that one of the elements that we would be looking to add as a condition to either a loan or grant program? Because if they don't retain the jobs, it doesn't help us a whole lot. We want to make sure that the monies we utilize give them the hand up that they need. But hopefully the opportunity to retain the jobs that that are critical for their operation.
Yes, under CDBG rules, they would have to create or retain a low income job and and what we consider creating or retaining, we end up having to go back a minimum of one year later and ensure that that job still exists or it's it's held by the same individual and they are and they are low income. So that's something that we would have to monitor for.
Okay. With regard, I know we're this is all new and we want to try to keep it as streamlined and low bars to success as we can. Do we have or have you thought about requiring some sort of proven reduction in a small business company's revenues attributed to the COVID crisis? In other words, would they provide evidence that there be no taxes to the state of Washington, not to the city? We have no be no tax. But could that be documentation supportive of proof of revenue reduction during the COVID crisis? Are we going to require that?
Yeah, I mean, we could. We could document it a number of ways. We we truly have to document that there is some form of impact from COVID-19. That's that's something from CDBG rules. So we could look at we typically what I would do is require them to provide their their business P and Ls from say the first quarter of of 2019 versus the first quarter of 2020 or or something along those lines. So most of the businesses should be having their their first quarter P and Ls. They're done at this point in time. So they should be fairly easy to see. We could. We could have them provide their current months as well and then compare them to last year's.
So one of the issues we're hearing out there is that, you know, certainly tenants are having a hard time paying for their their monthly rent. But landlords likewise, if they don't get tenant rent, would have a hard time paying their mortgages. I know that the city of Tacoma has a particular program where they're doing some sort of rent assistance, but it's not being paid the tenant. It's being paid to the landlord. After the tenant proves that they're unable to pay rent. In a program like ours, is it possible that the landlord could be considered a business for purposes of this loan process?
They could be if if you chose to assist residential landlords in this or a commercial landlord. I mean, that that is a viable business. I wasn't. I wasn't envisioning landlords and and property management companies so far. I mean, if your property manage management company may be a little different, but actual landlords, I wasn't wasn't considering those to be the what we were looking to affect.
No, I completely understand that. I would prefer to focus on the small businesses. So assuming we had up to 10 grand of the 300 and some odd thousand dollars, it appears that you know, we could successfully impact maybe 32 to 33 businesses. Are you hearing or is Becky hearing out there that businesses of that magnitude, the under 10 are asking for additional help other than what the county and the SBA is offering?
I have an opportunity for stopgap. I mean, we're we're off, obviously.
The opportunity there to get some money in their hands sooner than later because the PPP program is a bit delayed.
Yeah, I haven't heard, at least I haven't discussed that much with Becky lately. From what we had been hearing before this was a lot of the businesses that that she'd been hearing from, the the most important thing for them would be to get assistance as quickly as they can. The most of them need whatever they can get now as quickly as they can. And to make it a broad program, there's there's a number of programs out there. We received a couple of comments. One of them talked specifically about making it broad enough to allow things for like equipment lease purchase or payments and so forth. There's
I saw that, yeah.
There's all kinds of programs out there for for payroll, but there's not a lot for some of these other specialized costs.
Right. Well, if it was a loan and they had provable need with declining revenues, I assume it could go toward any worthwhile expense to keep them up and running as best we could.
Yes, yeah, and that's that's up to you all as council to decide. You can CDBG, CDBG. The rules literally say it can. It can be loaned to anything that's not ineligible. And there's only two or three things that are ineligible. So I mean, it's it's completely wide open program.
So if we were to say loan versus grant, and I'm not quite sure where I I sit on that issue until I hear from everybody else on the council, I could go either way. I mean, grant would be less administrative burden to you. We wouldn't have to worry about the documentation of the notes, the monitoring of the payments, the deferral of, you know, in all that sort of stuff. Would it be less administrative burden and quicker to get the funds in the hands of the business owners if we did the grant process?
From a CDBG perspective, it's going to be fairly similar. I mean, most of the documentation that I'm going to be doing, they're going to have to provide me profits and losses from one year to the next, so I can compare. So I'm doing that either way. The job retention, job creation is is either way. It's it isn't really significantly different one way or another. And what it where it will be significantly different is just obviously the monitoring and and making the payments and and taking that income in down the road.
I wonder, and I'm throwing this out there for the good of the whole. I wonder if we proceed with a grant program with a caveat that if at the end of the period of time, six months, one year, you haven't retained or sustained the employment that we ask that you do retain or sustain, then it changes from a grant to a repayable loan. That way it incentivizes the companies, kind of like the PPP program, that it's forgivable if indeed you retain the employment that you have. That would be my thought. So that's all the questions I have.
All right, Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, I have a couple of questions and one is when we back last month, when we discussed this, there was a qualification in the discussion that the business owner needed to be a lower moderate income individual. And I'm not seeing that in the request for council action where the requirements and eligibility for the loan is there. Is there a reason why that was not? And you spoke about the employees needing to be LMI as opposed to the business owner.
Yeah, and I was just speaking, I guess, just in general terms. The the intent of the program would neither be to nor to or exclude either. I mean, we we could assist a micro enterprise. So somebody who has five employees or fewer and the owner was low income. So I mean, we could justify it through the low income process through CDBG. And or you can do the small business assistance. So we we can do both with this program. That was the intent to to continue to allow us to do both.
I guess the question would be the opposite. The owner of a small business who is got a variety of sources of income. And so that he they themselves are not low or moderate income. It's just that they've got a business of where they're paying employees at a low and moderate income rate. That's where I'm wondering whether the eligibility ends or 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 continues.
It would ultimately depend on what what you decide as a council. I mean, the 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 whole point of the CDBG economic development assistance is job creation or job retention. So that can be through employees' job creation, or it can be through a micro enterprise, a business owner. Or a combination there of you could have a micro enterprise business owner and his employees to to kind of hit those numbers. So it's it's something that that you can tailor. However you so choose under the CDBG rules. So you could, we could take this program and say we require one employee, which is is what we were kind of doing with the funding. We're tying the funding to $2,500 per employee retained. So there is that presumption that you're retaining employees the way that it was designed for this program.
So are you see yourself being able to say you're receiving $2,500 per employee, but in addition to documenting the COVID 19 loss of income to the business that you would document that at least four of those employees are lower moderate income folks based on the wages they're being paid? I guess I'm trying to figure out how we.
Yeah, under under CDBG rules, the actual rule is you have to create a job. Each each business has to create or retain 51% of the jobs for low income individuals. So if if let's say that business you're assisting is is the the business owner and four employees. In that case, then three of those people would have to be low incomes because you have to get to the minimum 51%. So you you've always got this magic number rolling around. No matter who you assist, at least 51% of them have to be low income. I I my thought is in where we're at today and in these current times, if if you've got an employee or a business that has laid off employees or is looking to lay off employees, most of these employees are going to be considered low income because once you're laid off, your income is $0. So HUD is projecting their income. So HUD isn't necessarily caring that you've got someone who made $80,000 last year. So it's you're looking at low income employees retention 51% tied to the the loan itself of $2,500. So that's that's kind of the wrapping it all together, how you'd be looking at how many individuals are retained.
When we speak about a 0% loan of, let's say, $10,000 with payment deferred for 12 months, what really is the repayment plan beginning at 12 months? Do they is it is the $10,000 due or what is the what happens there?
Then it's going to be based on the the term of the loan. So you're just basically a a flat amortizing loan with 0% interest. So if it's a 10 year term, it's 120 months divided by the dollar amount. A 20 year term would be 240 divided by the dollar amount. Those are things that either staff can decide or council can decide for staff. There's there's a few variables that are out there for you guys to to decide. That's one of them as well.
Well, what are the factors that would go into either staff or council deciding on the term for these loans?
Typically, you're going to do that before the program's rolled out. So you're going to you're going to have a business applying, knowing that all of the terms are 0% deferred, 12 months, no payments with a 10 year term or a 20 year term. That's that's typically going into the program. You you're already going to have that rolled out. We do that with our loan programs for homeowners. They're all 20 year terms. So it's it's when you when you're going into it and applying, you know exactly what you're going into it for.
And you mentioned several times that the council needs to make some decisions, the the option one versus option two, the loan versus grant decision. And it sounds like there's maybe something of do we want to have a standardized term if we go with a loan provision? And to do that. But the action item that's before us is the resolution. And the resolution is approving the amendment to the plan as well as the amendment to the public participation plan. And both of those are worded neutrally in terms of loan or grant. So what's the process at this meeting for us to make a decision is about between option one and option two, since option one and option two aren't actually a part of any of the documents or the resolution?
Well, the wording in the in the amendment is as designed. I mean, it it when you do a an amendment or sorry, when you do an annual action plan, you're you're allocating funds to a program. The the specifics of the program are not laid out. So you're you're basically allowing X amount of dollars for an economic development project or X amount of dollars for a housing project. Once those are approved, then the specifics for the program can be developed. So it it wasn't laid out specifically which whether the program is a loan or a grant program, HUD isn't looking for that. They're just looking specifically for a dollar amount to be allocated. And for what? Is it a job creation? Is it a housing activity? So that's specific or that that activity was left vague. It was written the the way that it's HUD speak in essence. What we're looking for tonight from you all as a council is direction in what you would like to see in that economic development program. Do you want it to be a loan program? Do you want it to be a a grant program? Do you have any changes in the dollar amounts, terms, any any of that? So the any specifics to the program, who you want it to serve, those types of things are what we're looking from you as a council. So we're we're looking to approve a generic blanket annual action plan amendment, a generic process for the citizen participation plan. And then specifics from from you all drilling down to how you want us to implement those those actions.
Okay, I I guess I'm a little concerned because I did send an email and asked the city manager what actions the council would need to take after tonight to for the program to move forward. And the answer I got is is that after tonight, there's not any more console action that it would all be handled in terms of operationally. And so since there's nothing for us to so it it doesn't sound like it's going to come back to us to vote on a like we did with rental housing or where here are the specifics of the program. I guess that, you know, I'll leave it to the mayor to decide if we come to a consensus guidance to you through our discussions. I I would just say that for the thought is is that I'm 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 more supportive of of going with a grant program than a loan program. I understand the that loans can be revolving and and that the money can be used over, but I'm I'm just not thinking that small businesses need some money from us at the same time that they're getting some debt from us. And I don't know what 12 months from now is going to look like, but we are all saying that there is some uncertainty. I mean, this is tended to be some immediate infusion so that they can either keep their doors open or when they get to the right phase of that for their business in the governor's plan, that they can reopen to be able to go and do that. And I I don't necessarily know that giving someone but saying, but you got to start paying it back in 12 months is is as helpful in that regard as I would like to be. I would also note that the two public comment letters that we received both spoke to a preference for grants. That one that specifically felt that there's unique pressures on some childcare businesses that 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 grants would help and the and the timeline for and rate of recovery is just there. And the other was a business owner that expressed a preference for for grants with a skew restrictions on what the money could be used for. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, a few questions. So it was touched on. Is the AMI standard gone?
No, there's the AMI to to qualify for jobs retained or or created for low income. There's still 80% or lower.
So the the jobs have to be 80% or lower, or the owner's business income has to be 80% or lower?
The individual, if you're if you're looking at job creation or retention, the the actual employees, their household has to be 80%.
Okay.
AMI.
And is that a requirement of CDBG?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then do we know how many given what you presented us, 10 or fewer employees, $10,000, how many businesses do you think we're talking about here?
Dave, do you remember those numbers? I believe it was it was around 158, 150 to 200, I thought. Is that the correct number, Dave? Well, Dave.
Best guess.
That's a best guess. The feeling is is that most of these businesses will be found along two sections in Lakewood, South Comeaway, Pacific Highway. And then some other other strip commercial in certain selected parts of the city.
Okay, and and so if if we started out as a loan program, do we retain the right to change it to a grant program?
Yeah, you can. You can change at any point in time. It would be a a simple amendment to the the consolidated plan at that point in time.
Is is it? Do we know for sure a a grant is okay with CDBG? Because I I know at the county there it's not a grant program. It's a loan program. They're hoping eventually, I think that it might become a grant program, but is it? But there's always gift of public fund stuff, but it's federal money is different than state money. So are we confident that a grant program is okay?
It is. Under CDBG, it can be either a grant or a loan specifically.
Okay, okay. Great, thanks.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, I've got a question. If we were to go with option one, which is the loan, could we change that to a grant at a later date?
You, yeah, you you can. The there really aren't any restrictions on this program.
All right. Okay, good. Now you've been asking for some direction, and I want to pick up where Councilmember Branstadter left off. While it's nice to think about grants, I see those as a one time transferance of money from one body to another. Whereas a loan, it seems to me expands the economic safety net or allows greater access over time by more businesses. And since we don't know the extent of the economic damage that has been and is being done by COVID-19, it seems to me that if we start the loan program that we may over time be helping more businesses than otherwise. And I mean, I think a 0% interest, 12 months deferred, I don't know, maybe we could extend that 12 months deference. And a 10 year term, I would think over that time, that $351,000 in the form of loan money would have a greater impact on the city's small businesses than otherwise. So it's if I had, you know, I I tend to lean more toward option one, more toward the we loan the money and we work with these small businesses as much as we can. But I I'm making this case because I think we help more businesses over the near and longer term period. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions before mine? I I would just have a couple of cautions here. One, I I'm open to a forgiveness for job retention concept that I think we can decide on later. One of the chief advantages, I think of a loan program is it's somewhat self regulating. The county's program that's was cited by The county's program that's was cited by Jeff was oversubscribed as at the 640, and the county put another seven figures into it. It has a couple hundred applicants, and virtually none of those have applicants have received money from any of these other programs. That's one of the disqualifying factors. If you get the payment protection plan, you can't get one of the county loans. And it may, like Mr. Volkey indicated, it may turn into a forgiveness grant program at some point. I would also caution against making this a 10-year, well, maybe it's the bank lawyer in me. It's an unsecured loan, it's not real big. I think three years is probably a pretty reasonable time, five years at the outset. They're unsecured, it's not a real estate loan, like like some of those long-term ones, and those aren't particularly onerous payments. At three years, it's like 300 bucks a month. So I'd like to go forward with, number one, with the idea that we can come back and revisit it and have maybe a partial, you know, somebody's out a year and they've kept their employees, maybe half of it's forgiven or something. Totally open to to something like that. I would hope that we have as few restrictions as possible. This is one of the rare occurrences where CDBG money from HUD has had the lease loosened. Mr. Gum has one or two fewer hoops to jump through, like the five-day process. The first go around, they they didn't even do the five days. The only thing they think they loosened up when they first had their first conference was, we'll let you do the 30-day thing on the internet. But they turned around pretty quickly in the next few days and loosened up. So I think we need to take advantage of it and move forward quickly. Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gum. So if we go with option one, which would be the loans, and you're pulling about $25,000 aside for administrative costs, where would the administrative money come from for a second or third round of loans for a revolving fund?
Once it turns into a revolving fund, then the program supports itself. So I mean, you could use the funds that come back to the program. So in essence, if there's no interest, those would be slightly diminishing over time. We could also use our annual CDBG allocation for our administration dollars that we have. So we have about $110,000 a year for admin. If if there's only 30 of these loans that we're administering, we could probably realistically do that with our our annual allocations admin every single year. So I don't see it being a huge administrative burden moving forward.
So if I hear you correctly, the current about $112,000 for admin for the regular CDBG could cover the ongoing?
Yeah, I would see that being the case going forward easily.
Okay. I am intrigued by the idea of starting off as a loan program and possibly moving to grants. I'm concerned with us maybe picking and choosing who can't pay back their loan and then gets forgiven, and then somebody else doesn't get forgiven. So I would prefer that it would be across the board. We say, okay, we're, you know, we started out as loans and now we're grants, and everybody gets, you know, everybody gets the same the same rights. I would prefer to make it a grant program. I certainly understand the intent here, and funds are bound to get tighter than they are now. You know, we don't know how bad things are going to get, but it's probably going to be bad. But these folks are on the brink now, and it's they're operating on razor-thin margins, and it's going to take them at least a year, if not longer, to get back on their feet. And then they've got one more thing hanging over their heads. And are they able to stay afloat if they've got that? And if they're able to get some of these other other things that are loans and not not grants? So I think it would be it would be a very amazing thing for us to be able to do to to assure, you know, with any, nothing is ever assured. But but it would it would alleviate a source of a source of anxiety in order to do this as a grant than a loan. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, I had one other question. We have inserted the Small Business Emergency Services Program into the current action plan for 2019. So given the fact that it's potentially going forward as we are doing the next five-year plan in the 2020 action plan, are we going to need to include this program in those so that the the program just doesn't abruptly end at the end of the 2019 CDBG year?
No, the the annual action plan is it it's kind of a living document until you've expended all those funds. So even though the timeline ends on June 30th for the annual action plan, if there's funds, they continue until they're fully expended, however long that takes. And they're just included in that plan, and it just continues in HUD's electronic system. So there would be. Go ahead.
So that when you bring us future budgets like you have of where you the reprogramming funds from three years earlier and into the current year's budget and things like that, that's what would happen with these dollars if they're expended, even if we don't, and if we don't expend all the dollars by June 30th, we don't have a problem unless if this program isn't in the 2020 and action plan in the next five-year program.
No, it it continues on until you expend the funds. We've got a few programs right now that we approved, I believe in 18. So we've got some public works, lighting projects that haven't taken place, and they're they're still active in the IDIS system. So if you approve the funds under the 19 Amendment, they're active until they're fully expended or you you choose to discontinue the program. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in one year or another, just any point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now what I intend to do is entertain a motion on the general generally worded resolution that provides for the community input and on a modified basis and the program in general. And then I'll come back to take a poll as to preferences so that we can give staff some guidance. So entertain a motion on the resolution.
So move this, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Branstadder. Is there further discussion on the resolution? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Let's go back and unmute our mics. I only heard Mr. Simpson. Will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Okay, so now so to summarize, I think that we have three general paths we can take, or one, two, and two B, which would be grant, loan, and forgivable loan. And so we'll kind of do this on a hand raise, since everybody seems competent at that, to give me an idea of what your preference is. And then I'll summarize when we come back and drill, have some discussion, drill down on that a little bit, and we see which way the lean is. So first, who who would prefer a pure grant program? Okay, I see. I was I was looking for the electronic hand raise, so I have to change. You can see more people. Let's see.
Have to be specific.
Ms. Farmer, Mr. Ms. Bran, Mr. Branstadder. Who would prefer a pure loan program? Mr. Simpson? And who would prefer a forgivable loan program, some condition like retaining employees? Wayland, Volkey, and Anderson. So the lean is four for loans, and three of those are forgivable loans. So, and forgivable loans are closer to grants than they are to loans. So I, it's and now I'd like to get folks' ideas on what the condition for forgiveness should be. Retention of employees still being around, going bankrupt, I don't know.
I would I would prefer retention of employees. I mean, but I I guess it would be, but I will say forgivable loan seems a little bit more complicated, but I think at the end of the 12 months, if they retained four employees, if they had four employees and got 10,000 bucks, that that would work, right?
Yeah, look to the PPP program for guidance or something. I think they've got something along that line. I got, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, again, I think the forgivable loan is a nice idea. I think it's it's nice in a perfect world where we know that everyone will be treated equally in forgiveness. And my concern is that during the time period in which the loan has been given to a business, we have no way of knowing what will change and what will not change in that business. And I think if we stick to something that's a little more clear, i.e., you have a loan, you have 12 months, it's or 12 months deferred, it's zero interest, and we go with your idea of a three to five-year period to pay it back, I think that gives us a greater sense of stability than forgiveness, yes. But when do you, how do you start to parse between businesses? I mean, not only in what has happened to that business over the time period, but different types of businesses. So I, again, I I'm happy to hear that we're leaning more toward the loan or option one. But I think forgiveness is a much more loose subjective term that I don't think will serve us well. Thank you.
Mr. Wayland.
Thank you, I lean on the side of the forgivable loan with the criteria similar to the PPP. But the PPP allows one to look at a roster of employees at the time you obtain the loan. And I think as long as you haven't laid off folks prior to obtaining the loan, retain the folks that you have, and at the end of the period, whether it's the PPP, it's I think it's 60 days or whatever the heck it is. In our situation, it might be six months or nine months. If you retain those employees or the number of employees and haven't dropped, then it becomes forgivable. What I would like to do is maybe loosen the strings a little bit to say it doesn't have to be used solely on payroll to be forgivable. It can be used on other things like equipment lease expenses or other expenses, because a similar business may have obtained a PPP loan, but they need that bridge money to get over the hurdle to pay their rent or other equipment lease purchases, those kinds of things. And I think as long as, at the end of the day, they've retained those employees, I'd be fine with forgiving the loan. But it gets them over the hurdle, because the PPP is a bit more restrictive on the categories against which you can apply the funds. So this would be the stopgap.
And I don't know that, just kind of to summarize, I don't know that I've heard a suggestion either from staff or any other council members that we restrict the usage of the money.
Probably not, I just kind of wanted to make it clear that if we were going to say as a criteria to be forgivable, you got to retain the employees. I don't want to insinuate that it has to be only used for payroll.
Mr. Branstadder.
Yeah, I think on the, you know, the concept of forgivable can be a slippery slope once you forgive the first one. And it's also a published criteria for forgivability that that businesses can target. I think whether we do grants, whether we, if we do loans, the staff is going to require the the employee retention data to be done, because that's a requirement of CDBG. That I'm almost in the line of wanting of being willing to forgive the loan if a business can show that they've recovered. In other words, if 12 months from now, or 24 months from now, you're still in business and you have the same number or more employees, and your revenue is back to where it was pre-COVID. You know, then you, we, what we've done is we've invested with something that has become a healthy business, and I'd rather use the forgiveness to reward that rather than use forgiveness as something that you know, is a basic requirement of retaining of low and middle-income employees. And I do think we can make the requirement for forgiveness can kind of defer making those rules. If we decide we're going to go through and we're and we and we say that we're going to be open down the road to establishing some criteria for businesses when we know better what's going on, we maybe can make a better choice about criteria than than we can tonight.
Ms. Farmer.
So to echo something that Councilmember Simpson said, and several others, I still worry about equity. I'm also concerned about unintended consequences. For example, gyms, restaurants, theaters, these businesses will not be allowed for quite some time to have the amount of customers that they had before, meaning that they might have to lay off staff. And they have no other choice. And so for us to tie, I mean, obviously, I understand it's a CDBG requirement, but if we're not going to forgive their loan because they laid off staff, well, they had no choice. And so it's not really comparable to a to some other, you know, perhaps office-based business where, you know, business may be down a little bit, and they're just waiting for for their activity to pick up. But there will be some that will not be able to pick up.
I had to agree with Ms. Farmer. I I think that any forgiveness provision, I should think there should be one. It should be objective, it should be attainable by the the all the folks who are taking out the loans. And it maybe the answer to the particular concern is they have to have at least half the employees they had on March 1st, 2020. We, I think we can figure something out, or staff could come up with a criteria that we can arrange later once we have a better idea of what has happened, since the circumstances change by week. This plugs the gap, and we can decide what criteria across the board can be applied to the loan later. Mr. Wayland.
I can agree with that. I think the key for us is to come across that we are, you know, here with you with our business community. We want to get these funds out there as soon as we can with the least amount of encumbrances attached to them, just to get them out the door. And we can talk about some of these criteria later as things unfold. So I think I think we're on the right track.
As businesses are looking As businesses are looking for the, the lifeline, they're grasping it.
Right.
Virtually everything. And I, I don't think we're going to have any problem being subscribed if we don't get too complicated.
Right. Yeah, it's really interesting to see across the spectrum. Anecdotally, we've probably all heard from constituents and other businesses, who's obtained a PPP loan, who hasn't, who's still waiting, who's really struggling. I mean, it's all over the map and nonprofits are getting some PPP loans, for-profits aren't, for-profits are getting them some nonprofits, all over the place. What's consistent is there's just a lot of hurt out there for sure.
So. I, I, I think in the interest of simplification, I mean, if it starts getting too complicated and we can't come to some agreement as to what the what the forgive, what would constitute a forgivable loan, then I would prefer a grant. I mean, if, if it's going to overly complicate the situation, let's just go with this. I mean, we, we may have, I, I'll tell you, if it's a grant program, it'll be gone in
A week.
In a week. I mean, it's going to go very, very quickly. One of the things about a forgivable loan program is you're, you're going to have some people hold back on it because they don't want to do it as a loan. But if, 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 if we can't, we seem to be kind of struggling over the idea of what, what makes forgivable. I, 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 I thought it would be employees, but I, I mean, I think Councilmember Wayland makes a good point that it could be other things. And so, I mean, if we're going to rather than complicating it, maybe we just do a grant program this first time around. I remember we have more money coming from the, from the state that we could probably use for a similar program come, going forward. We haven't spoken to the city manager about that, but there, there is almost $1.8 million on its way.
Like, one of the concerns I have too is fairness within the community is if it's free money.
First come.
It's a rush to the door and institution is sophisticated and finds out about it first is there. And maybe by the time the Korean business community finds out about it, it's gone. Or maybe they're first at the door and the only businesses that get any money are itself to come away.
Right.
One of the reasons that I I think the loan aspect of it provides some self-regulation because it's anticipated that if you don't meet the conditions, you're going to have to, or you're going to have to pay it back to start with, or then if you don't meet the conditions, you're going to have to pay it back. Maybe we can go back and, Mr. Gumm still there?
I am.
Maybe you could come up with, if we go forward with the loan, come up with some options based on what you've heard as to something that would fit CDVG guidelines. See, I don't, I don't think we can design it tonight as far as the, any forgiveness criteria.
Yeah.
And see what what kind of bumpers we have to operate inside of and something you think based on your experience with the program that would be fair and give applicants equal access to the opportunity of forgiveness.
Can do that.
Thank you. So. Lingered too long. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business?
No, Mayor.
And so we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, I'd like to call upon our communications, Bryn Grimley, to give you an up update on where we are with the Connections Magazine, not as it relates so much in 2020, but as we look out into the next, next biennium, 21, 22. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Grimley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm here to provide an update on the Connections Magazine. And for this update, I'll be referring to page 164 in the Agenda Packet that you have. So for a little bit of background, the city entered into a contract in 2015 with a third-party publishing company to produce the Lakewood Connections Magazine. It's a 32-page magazine that goes out three times a year to our residents and it's mailed to every household and business via bulk mail. We use this magazine obviously to share updates with our residents as to upcoming projects, things that are of interest to our residents based on the work that we're doing here with the city, as well as we promote our events through the magazine and share prior photos from past events. And then the back section of the magazine is used as a a recreation guide for our Lakewood Senior Activity Center to show the upcoming class schedules. As a part of the agreement that we have with the third-party vendor to produce a magazine, the city provides all the content and then we send that to the publishing company, which does the layout and design, and then they send it down to a printer in Oregon where it is printed and then it's shipped back up and it is then dropped at our post offices for distribution by the mail carriers. As a part of the 2019, 2020 biennial budget process that we're currently in, we looked at ways we might be able to achieve cost savings because of the fact that the budget for the prior biennium, the advertising sales did not come in as predicted and, and the budget was not met. And in that research that was done by the Communications Division, while we found that we could certainly lay out and design the magazine for significantly cheaper than the current costs we were paying, it was the production and printing costs as well as the mailing costs that continued to be the, the largest sum that we were paying and doing it outside of the contract that we had, we would not have the advertising revenue to offset those costs. Under our current contract, the publishing company provides an ad sales representative and that person is responsible for going out and soliciting advertising to help offset some of the production costs. And then that ad sales rep also receives a 25% commission on those sales. And what we saw was, if you actually want to look at table one, that outlines what our expenses were from 2016 through year-to-date, our January publication of this year, which is the only magazine we've done so far. And advertising revenues actually saw a bump up in 2017 that was largely due to our summer publication, which a lot of folks wanted to be in because it was promoting Summer Fest. But as you can see in 2018 and even in 19, our advertising revenues were going down and we brought it to the attention of the company, expressed our concern that the ad sales were significantly dropping off. They did bring in a new rep and even at the start of this year, we had another new rep come in. The, the biggest thing has just been we've been unable, or they've been unable to secure the, the revenue that we feel is necessary to help offset the costs of produce the magazine. As you can see, our printing and, and production costs are significant for the magazine. So as we began to look at the coming biennial budget process, the city manager requested another review as to other alternatives to producing the magazine. And we went back to the publishing company and asked them what it would cost if we did just a one time a year or a two time a year. So those costs that are reflected there, those do not take into any account, any advertising revenue. So that's just a straight cost of what we would pay to produce either once a year or twice a year. And then I also had them drop down from 32 pages to 16 pages. The other option that was looked at was creating a quarterly newsletter similar to what the city of Sumner does, and that was provided in your packets, an example of their most recent newsletter. So that could be produced for significantly cheaper as far as the design and layout costs. But as you'll see, the printing mailing costs again are quite high, coming in, you know, roughly 21,000, almost, you know, $21,500 a loan just to print and then another roughly $21,000 for the cost of that bulk mail permit, which again has that total cost around $45,000 and that would not offer any sort of advertising revenue offset. And then the last option that we looked at was the online-only format, which would be continuing to really bolster and buffer what we're already doing as far as online news. There's certainly a way to boost that and create a package where we could be providing in addition to the weekly city news posts that are going up currently on our website, we could also package that with any newsletter format, allow folks to sign up for that, similar to like what they've done for the City Managers Bulletin or Economic Development Bulletins. We do have an area on our website already for individuals to sign up for email notifications, including park events. And we can certainly continue to expand those campaigns to better promote our events through an e-newsletter. We obviously have significantly stepped up our online presence on social media. That is predominantly where we do see our largest reach as far as promoting our events and our day-to-day happenings. And I think that really seems like the, the most cost-effective way. The other consideration we've given is, you all know, since you just discussed this, as it relates to the small businesses presently and, and all of our businesses in Lakewood, you know, we still don't know what it's going to look like as a result of COVID and I think it's pretty safe to say that most individuals who are running and operating businesses in Lakewood are not going to be able to provide the, the financing needed to pay for magazine, print art, you know, print advertising. They're going to be using, if they are promoting, they're probably going to be using whatever's free through their social media accounts, or you do get a better deal using Facebook to promote. It's significantly cheaper and, and you can see that reach. And so those are considerations that were also given is the uncertainty around whether there's going to be that revenue for businesses to also promote in the print magazine. So table three gives you a look at the options and annual costs. So it takes a look at, you know, what the anticipated costs are, you know, I think we also have to factor in the fact that postage could also continue to go up. That's something that, you know, we just don't know. This is the best guess at what we're currently paying, but that rate can change. So at this point in time, it's staff's recommendation that we discontinue the Connections Magazine and move forward to doing an online-only. And the reason we need to bring this forward now is under our contract with the publisher, we have to let them know by June 1st at the latest of our intent to cancel that contract. So with that, I would welcome any questions that you may have.
Questions from Ms. Grimley. Mr. Wayland.
Thank you. So assuming we have to use them for 2020, when are the next Connection magazines planning to be produced?
So we, we do have a, under our contract, we will need to, we will need to continue for this year. So we have two more publications that we would do in 2020. It would be the, starting in 2021 where we would discontinue. So we have another publication that's set to hit homes June 30th. And then our fall publication, they're still getting back to me on those dates because I, I would like to bump them back a little bit because it wasn't going to be much time between publications.
So I assume the advertising window is done for the June 30?
Uh, no, he is still soliciting what he can. He had some ads that were already secure before all of this and I think he's doing his best to try and reach out to individuals presently.
So a couple of comments on the solicitation of ads. I don't know where the guy is reaching out or where the, the person is reaching out to get advertising sponsors or advertising businesses. We may need to take, if we were to go forward with it, to take the lead and putting more out on our own Facebook. Maybe we do that on whatever media we have to say the upcoming Connections Magazine is going to be published X date. If you would like to advertise in that publication, it's due by X date. If I've missed those notices, shame on me, but I think we could be more present with that because I just don't recall seeing them.
Yeah, I think, you know, and I, I do agree. I think there's a fine line. We have to be careful in that we don't want to give the appearance of conflict of interest. And that's one thing that, you know, when we had a former ad salesperson, because Becky and I do work together to provide our ad sales reps with lists of new businesses. We send them emails with new leads. So when we have a new business come in, we let them know, we provide them with the business license list of all the business licenses that come in. So they're provided with a comprehensive list of, of our businesses and then they make those one-on-one connections. You know, yes, putting more information out there could help, but I also know that there's a concern too of conflict of interest. If city employees begin to solicit ads, our business is going to want favors or whatnot. So there's that line that I, I'm very hesitant to cross.
I hear you. I'm not suggesting that we would intentionally reach out and solicit one-on-one. My thought would be to post something, whatever social media stuff we put out there generally, not targeted, but as general information to whomever wants to potentially advertise in Connections because most people, unless they're contacted by that woman or that guy who's got some sort of list, they're not going to know. And so I think we're shitting ourselves on a foot on that. The other thought that I raised for options, it may not have been considered, maybe problematic, but in this time of, you know, going along to get along, we should consider it. The Water District puts out a paper bill every month. Why can't we put a flyer in the paper bill and pay the Water District something to have a city flyer with, you know, information de jour of the month in the mail that goes out with a water bill? Same with the school district. They put out a newsletter, they have a snippet about the city in there. But perhaps we could coordinate with them on their paper mailer that goes out and get a larger snippet if we paid, you know, part of that collaborative cost, cheaper than the Connections Magazine, but a bit more than doing nothing and better bang for the buck. My concern is that going online only misses a segment of the population. Linda can probably speak to this better than anyone else, but it seems like online only misses a, a segment that likes to receive and touch and feel and read paper. And if we strictly go online, we lose that. My other thought is if we do anything, maybe we, in lieu of doing something collaboratively with the Fire, or the Water District or the School District, that we do something quarterly, whether it's a reduced publication, 16 pages rather than 32, I think we can get the good information, the essential information back to basic information, maybe a little less fluff and still get critical information out to people. I think that's helpful. And I'm still one, my last comment, that believes we need to get on top of that reader board thing because you know, we, we've talked a lot about council goals, about transparency and more and better communication. And I think reeling back from that is a step backwards. So I would prefer that we do something better than being more restrictive.
And I think there's an option too. I mean, and we've, I've had this conversation with the Senior Activity Center as far as reaching, because obviously that would be a loss for them to not have the magazine go to the homes of the active older adults and, and they send quarterly newsletters currently. So the idea would be that they would use that mailing to notify them of the next class schedule, whether that means they're actually mailing them the class schedule or just including a blurb with class schedules now available for pickup at the Senior Activity Center, or for those who are online, you can see it online. There's certain, there's those opportunities as well to use the existing. You're still looking at that, that mailing cost and that production cost and that's where it gets, that's where the price is, is, it's just, it's not cheap and the mailing's not cheap.
Is it impossible to slip a, a paper flyer in with the Water District bill or the?
We can certainly inquire. I know that when I inquired with some of our utility providers about including information regarding the census, we only had one that was, was able to work with us on that. The other ones were unable to allow for that to go out just based on their systems and, and how it works. So we would have to ask them and explore what that could look like.
Okay. I'm all for saving money, but we can't do it at the expense of not getting information out to the population. So.
Right, Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Ms. Grimley. I have been, first of all, kudos for you in how you've built the social channels and brought a very friendly, approachable writing style to the material on the web and the, and the managers' updates and, and all of that. So I, I very much appreciate what you've, what you've brought to the city and made it more transparent and more accessible. I do appreciate that. And having lived this where you have to take a look at the hard costs, literally the hard costs of paper and postage and say, oh my gosh, is this, is this still worth, worth, worth it? I feel your pain. I was very disheartened to hear that this would even, even be considered though. Because in the midst of a crisis, communications is the most important thing you need to do. And governments have such a hard time competing with everything and everybody else out there. And so it's, it's just really hard. You're not on an even playing field. No matter how much you try. Facebook is a pay-to-play field and I know that we've been able to do some things there. And so I appreciate that. Without, so I'm curious. So I'm curious, as far as there's social statistics with reach and engagements, do you have research that shows that if you went online only, you would be able to reach the vast majority of our 60,000 residents who are old enough to read?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think our data definitely supports that. If you look at our event promotion specifics, so if you're going to look at just getting the word out about here's what's coming up, and you have your event listings, we tend to reach, you know, well over, I mean, for Summer Fest alone, we can get close to 200,000 people that we've reached in that alone. So our event reach definitely has the largest, and that's where you also see it spread like wildfires. Obviously, as you know, certain posts certainly perform better than others. So where one might just go crazy and we might have 20,000 people that are reached by it, there are other ones that we put out there that are going to be less, just based on the nature of what they're about. But, you know, I think at this point, it's hard to know though as well, how many people who are receiving that magazine at home actually read it. Certainly, we anecdotally, we do hear from folks and they, you know, the spring cleanups, they might have a copy, they'll bring it. But we don't know how many of those magazines are coming in and just immediately going into the recycle bin either. And that's a lot of money being spent to go out the door or back out the door, I guess. So we have certainly seen our presence on social media grow. I know that not everybody's on it. You know, I understand and I respect that. And I think there's other ways that we can definitely reach people that go beyond that, whether we do individual postcard mailings for certain things, you know, that may be cheaper, but still able to get out key events that we might need to promote or upcoming things, you know, I think we can certainly explore that further beyond what we've currently done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm a huge, I may have mentioned this before, I'm a huge believer in research, and it is difficult and hard to get funding for and hard to convince people that you need to research how people are receiving your news and do they read, do they read that paper thing that comes in the mail every so often? So that would be good to do at some point, obviously not now. I understand that the contract that you're dealing with right now for the magazine is fairly untenable. It, being beholden to advertising at this point in the game is not something that I support, so I definitely support the idea of not renewing the contract. I am, I am not in support of stopping a paper-based communication. I would love to see a quarterly printed newsletter, something akin to what Sumner has perhaps. But this is a steal, you guys. Mailing, produce, writing, producing and mailing 16-page folded newsletter to your residents four times a year for $45,000 a year? That is amazing. We're already talking about $25,000 a year for administrative costs for our $350,000 small business emergency loan. So that's less than half, half the cost of that. So I would definitely encourage, strongly encourage a more conservative approach before we lose the paper version and find a way to either do our own newsletter. Because with the demise of legacy media, we're, we have to become our own communicators. Obviously, that's where we're at now. But I too, along with Deputy Mayor Whalen, had thought that we, there are, there's probably some opportunities to partner with the School District and to possibly do a utility bill insert with the Water District. When I was with the City of Tacoma, we had, we actually researched how many people read utility bill inserts, and it was amazing. We had a 65% reader and retention rate on utility bill inserts back in the day. So that, it absolutely blew our minds that we had that kind of, kind of connection with the, with the paper bill. So, thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we're in a time of where we don't need to be significantly cutting back on reaching out to citizens to do that. The value of the Connections Magazine is, it is read, it is durable. So it goes to a household, it will be looked at by multiple people within it, it will be retained. It isn't a point in time when it's on your screen. And is that a time when you really are ready to receive that message or do that or retain it for, for something to be able to go and do that? And I think that it's, it's a, a, a cost that is something that we should prioritize to do that. I could see going to 16 pages, four times a year, that I think the magazine has essentially two kinds of content, of things that we are putting out and that we're, that we're trying to both inform people above and celebrate and being able to go and do that. And then a significant number of pages that are just akin to a course catalog at the, at the Senior Center. I think the Senior Center could perhaps still get some impact, but that's where pages could be reduced. That, I definitely am not in favor of putting all of our eggs in a, in an online basket. I think, you know, that's, you reach one person in a household for, for a few seconds, and if it resonates, they'll, they'll do some more, but not to do that. So I'm also, I guess I'm hoping to be a bit of an optimist here. I mean, we're going to do a June, a September and a December magazine this year. That's in, or?
No, just two more, just two more. We just have two more.
In October?
One will be in the fall, and then one will be our summer one.
Summer and fall. You know, and I, and, you know, and I am thinking that, A, there is going to be stories, good news stories to tell as we get into 2021. Okay? And things that are, that are going to happen and that I think this magazine has been well-received in the community. I know I get out and I go to businesses and go to people's homes, and a copy of that magazine is, is there somewhere for someone to pick up and look at weeks after it has been received in the mail. So, you know, I'd like to look for retaining a quarterly publication, even if it's fewer
Yeah, I, I share that sentiment. The, I think it does a lot for the city's image, and we control the content and show people how their money is being spent well, that positive things are happening in the community. It has some stickiness to it when it gets there unlike a bill insert. And I was frankly surprised, given that, you know, those of us on the council have experience with political mailings, that how economical it is per piece, given the volume, a lot of that's the postage rate, but it still, it's less than 50 cents a shot. I think it's a good deal. So I'm open to tweaking it, but not just eliminating concept of printed communication. Any other comments, questions on that? And back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Just want to make sure we've got, it sounds like we've got consensus, Mayor, to keep it in some sort of maybe reduced fashion, but definitely keep the concept.
Yeah, we've got this, we've got 2020 that's under the contract, so that's not going to change. So it's a question of our budgeting process for the next biennium, what the alternatives are and how much money we decide to put in the budget. It's clearly a council choice.
Right.
Yeah, but really what drove this was the fact that we're committed to another year, and I just didn't feel comfortable committing to another year, given what the current situation is.
I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll pick us back up if we.
Well, yeah, right. So what I plan on doing, based on what I've heard here this evening, is I still need to move forward with canceling for 2021. However, put in there, we are open to other options and alternatives. You know, and right now, we only have three. I actually, if we're going to have a print newsletter, my preference has always been to go to four. And, but, but perhaps going to a reduced number of pages, as Mr. Grimley has outlined there, and we can work with them to get some different proposals and options, again, that come in biennium.
That's a good idea.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
It's like you have a consensus.
Next up, thanks, Ms. Grimley. Next up, I'd like to call on Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, to give you an update on where we are with all of our, all of our events. I do, I would like to note that the presentation that she's about to give you was based on current information as of about midweek last week. So, Ms. Dawsworth, did you hear what I said? I said the presentation you're about to give is based on the current situation as it was last week.
Correct, yes. Thank you, City Manager. Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I'm happy to come and chat with you tonight about our Park and Recreation Recovery Plan. You know, we're in a unique situation, and your team in Parks and Recreation started planning right around March 23rd when we closed the parks to figure out what steps we might need to take in order to open the parks and to implement programs, spring and summer and into the fall, but really getting us into our summer, busy summer season. We know information's been changing on a regular basis, week by week, day by day. Sometimes it feels like hour by hour. And we do know, at least even just the last two months, the last two weeks, that protocols, practices are changing. What we've done in the past, we may not be able to do in the future. It's very likely if we do do it in the future, it'll probably be happening in a different manner. So some of the things that we've done, we've really spent years building and changing and making super amazing for our citizens and our community. There may be a period of time we can't do it, and again, making some, some changes to how we do do that. Parks and Recreation, you know, has played a critical role, we believe, or will play a critical role in our community's recovery. We saw from the time that we closed the parks to when we just recently reopened the parks and throughout conversations that people have really relied on our parks. They've missed them when they were closed, they snuck in when they were closed, and now they're very thankful that they're open. And we know that it can support our, not just our economic recovery of our community, but the emotional and social health of our community, the isolation that's occurred with kids and our older adults and our families, that we can really work to bring people together. And we're in a really unique place to help the community learn how to get back together, how to gather safely, how to set the example so that people can become a community, get back to being a community. This phased plan, it was developed over a period of time, and again, it has changed many times since we started the conversation. But we really looked at a three-phase implementation or rolling out process, and it seems to be aligning quite closely with the governor's latest phased implementation plan, so that's great. And we really thought a lot about lots of different things in order to come up with the, the plan that we're showing you tonight. You know, we considered lots of information, and I listed many of those things back, but really making sure that we are creating a safe and healthy environment, not just for our citizens, but for our staff and anybody coming to the community. We've brainstormed lots and lots of scenarios, lots of options, have been webnaring and networking and Zoom meeting, like amazing amounts, working with people from throughout the state, across the country, but really looking at best practices, how things are working, what isn't working, what's acceptable, to come up with the things that we're going to chat with you about tonight. We do know, at least for now, that almost every single thing that we do will be modified in some manner. That might be using technology differently, that might be looking at registering for things that used to be just free drop-in, creating new barriers, new access, new ways to access signage, you know, different kinds of hygiene procedures to participate, to protect. And if you've gone to Trader Joe's or Costco, you know that you wait in line, you wait your turn, they wipe things down, things have changed, and we're going to change with them. So what I'd really like to do is focus on page 175 of your packet. That's a chart that we put together. And again, we overlaid the, we, we created this based on information we had as of last Thursday, I believe it was. So, but the information that we've gotten since then on Friday and as well as today with the governor's four phases, that really, the recommendations that we're showing you are really lining up quite well. And just to start off with, we've pretty much canceled everything through May. And so that has to do with access, ability to gather, social distancing and our ability to provide those programs. So, you know, pretty much one through seven were canceled. But we started looking at really our summer programs and our opportunities that are available to our community. And just starting off with item eight on there is our Farmers Market. And it was initially proposed to start June 2nd. That activity can start, it's an essential service based on criteria with state, the governor, and we believe it's an important opportunity for our community as well. We are looking at doing it differently, where it has in the past, you know, been all hands on deck and fun and lots of fun, is it'll start very slow. It'll start with the Health Department, Department of Health in the state has really specific criteria regarding Farmers Markets. So the initial kickoff would be just farmers and those kinds of essential elements. So we would be looking at a walk-through, possibly drive-through market. There's, we've been looking at so many different scenarios on how it can happen. And starting off slow, as you know, you can open it up to more people as the summer goes along, but it would start off, it's just primarily Farmers Market, farmer flowers, those kinds of elements. No entertainment, no gathering spots, no eating food, no eating food on site, and those are really clear requirements. But we are in the loop and prepared to get that implemented. We saw our park and facility rentals, you know, we do everything by permit, we coordinate hundreds of thousands of people throughout the year at the parks. So we know that as the original chart said, June 1st, we're looking probably more like June 16th, where you could do, start opening up those shelters, looking at ways for people to reserve those facilities, and then again, control that use and that access so that again, following specific criteria, those people can come out and start using some of our spaces. Those also generate a little bit of revenue, so that's great, to kind of get us back in the game regarding some of the lost revenue that we've seen over the last several months. We are looking at wanting to reopen our Senior Activity Center, again, looking at getting it open by the first of June and then starting to do some socially responsible programming starting the week of the 16th. And we leased the space at Pierce County, and they are open to us being able to provide those services and those opportunities because they know that we would do it in a safe, accessible manner with the right protocols, disinfecting areas, et cetera, et cetera. We are also looking at providing some form of summer camps this summer, a summer day camp. You know, in the past, we do week-long camps serving 60-plus kids, and so we're looking at slowly ramping that up starting June 22nd or when we physically can do it. It's going to, again, depend on can we get the proper personal protective gear for everybody? Do we have the right protocols in place? The right training? And are we able to hire staff in order to implement that program? We do charge fees for that. It's sort of a wash when it comes to the general fund, and so that might be an opportunity to get those kids and those families a place, a safe place to go for the summer. We're looking at canceling our lifeguard program. It's a very expensive program. It's for two months during the We're looking at canceling our lifeguard program. Uh, it's a very expensive program. It's uh, for two months during the year. It's at two swimming beaches. We think it will be phenomenally hard to manage that program. A, it's a big impact on our general fund, but also um, for the lifeguards to be hired and trained and to really monitor the water when people are gonna be fussing on the beach with the social distancing. They can't, we're not really expecting them to be um, social distancing guards and in order to really do their job on the beach, I think it, it would create some real safety issues. And so we're really looking at not doing lifeguards this summer. Um, Summerfest, the big city festival that we have grown and has become, uh, you know, statewide uh, event. Um, we're looking to cancel. Uh, although the governor's opening up things after July 7th, the planning, I just do not believe that we can do that in a socially responsible manner. There's just no way to manage the amount of people um, at that site that early in the game. In a really a socially responsible way at this point. Um, so we're, we're canceling that, looking to cancel that event. And moving on to our summer, um, we do believe we can do our summer concert series. We do believe that we can do, uh, we're gonna be posting some drive-in movies. We do believe that we can, we can do that. We can bring people back middle of July. We can give them an opportunity to gather in a safe way, um, in a socially responsible way, in a healthy way, and it would really be a fun way to get people back into the park and with a sense of community. Um, the other activities that you see below that are really looking at fall and um, those are kind of to be determined. We're planning to do them, but they may look and feel differently. And again, we're kind of waiting as things go, as things change, so that we can um, still provide those opportunities or some of those opportunities, like for instance, Truck and Tractor Day could be uh, something that we do, but maybe we don't do the hayride this year. Um, so again, providing those, those traditional events that the community has grown to love that have been family traditions, um, but just a little bit differently, especially this year. Uh, as we learn new ways to do things, to interact and to gather as a community. Um, again, our purpose is to create um, ma- to provide the guidelines and the protocols to create a healthy and vibrant community and events. My response is typically to the city manager is if we can do it, we will. If we can't do it, can't do it properly, we won't. So um, you know, we're learning every day about how to do things differently and better. We just had a great webinar today that Metro Parks put on. They're doing um, childcare for first responders, working with the school districts. We've communicated with our school districts and they're very supportive of what we're gonna do. So we really believe that um, that we can reinstitute some of these recent, these activities um, properly. So I'd love to hear your thoughts, answer any questions that you have. Uh, I, I did provide a chart in there just to show you and it's a summarized chart. We really considered lots and lots of alternatives. We didn't make any of these decisions very quickly. Really were thoughtful. We talked to our partners. We talked to our staff. We talked to our neighbors. Um, we really wanted to do what was best for our community uh, with the resources that we have or that we think we may have. So um, be happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions from Ms. Dodsworth, Mr. Wayland.
Yes, thank you, Mary. I know it's challenging to make these decisions when we spend so much time and effort, love and attention putting the programs together over the years very successfully. So. It'll happen again. My, my question to you on the night market and the uh, farmer's market, it sounds like you're talking about some sort of a drive-through opportunity for the market. So my question is, if we're talking some sort of a drive-through opportunity, maybe at least in the early ones, could that be an opportunity to use a colonial center? Cause it's really set up as kind of a drive-through opportunity and at least it would get some attention to the plaza.
Um, we certainly considered that and have talked about that. The main reason, excuse me, that we're not looking initially at utilizing the Colonial Plaza, not because it's not an amazing space and not because we don't want to draw attention to it. It's just, um, it's by far will be the most expensive place to run a program initially because just don't have all the resources. So there's no restrooms there. There's no hand washing stations there. We don't have equipment out there. So, and we may have staffing limitations this summer based on, you know, not hiring the, the seasonal folks that we usually have. And so being, you know, hauling every single thing.
Okay.
Every week. And honestly, we have visited some of the other night markets before all of this started. Our night market is gonna be unbelievably amazing compared to even what we've seen in these other places. And so part of it is people that have come to the, the um, the farmer's market at City Hall, they know how amazing that is. They came to the opening at the, some people opening at the Colonial Plaza. We don't want their first introduction at the Colonial Plaza to be kind of a
Letdown.
Sort of little thing that can give that um, uh, pizzazz that it needs. And so it doesn't mean that we won't come back in the fall maybe and do some big finale. It doesn't mean that we won't try and um, highlight that facility when we're ready to do that. But the plaza's not going away this year. We know that. And it just may take a little bit of time to get people back there in the right way to really highlight what a great place that is. Cause it is, it's amazing.
Got it.
We're gonna do the best we can with the resources that we have.
Well, I'm sure resources are gonna be challenging this year for at least the next quarter or two. So likely we'll be seeing uh, Ms. Kraus come to us with budget adjustments reflecting reallocation monies for the youth sum at the night market, Summerfest, those kinds of things, I presume. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Dodsworth. And back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And I'd like to actually just, well, Ms. Dodsworth is here, really compliment her. Um, you know, she gave you a, have a brief synopsis of who she's reached out to and the work that she's done, but um, I think we all know her and that's a bit of an understatement. She's really given some tremendous thought to this and uh, I know when she comes to me and talks with me about you, what she wants to do. Uh, to say that she has all of her Ts crossed and her Is dotted, um, is a bit of an understatement and I just want to recognize her for that. Um, also, um, you know, I really appreciate her, you know, pushing on some of these things because you know, at the end of the day, things are gonna get better. And this is one area where the city can take a strong leadership role in forging that issue of, you know, community and coming together. And um, you know, hopefully later this summer and into the fall, you know, we can bring back all of these events as they were. But if not, at the very least, we know we can do something and then we can then roll into 21 and hopefully 21 will be another, you know, great year as it has been in the past. So I just wanted to recognize um, Ms. Dodsworth and, and her team who you don't see here tonight for that.
Thank you.
Um, just a, a few updates. I think everybody is familiar with, um, you know, the governor's extended stay-at-home, stay healthy uh, proclamation. And um, so we're working through, working, working through that. Um, I think I had mentioned last week that um, you know, there was an issue with the OPMA and the PRA that the governor had um, um, suspended certain portions of that that would, for example, allow, you know, legislative bodies such as yourself to continue to meet, meet in a virtual environment. Um, we, we did learn from AWC today and others that if, if it hasn't already been done, uh, that, that suspension is expected to continue, which will allow you folks to continue to meet like this beginning next week. Cause if it's not done, um, then we're gonna have to find an alternative way to do that.
John, I uh, I re- received an email about a half hour after we started here that uh, Four Quarters signed off
Yeah.
on the meeting portion of the OPMA uh, through the end of May. Uh, but the PRA portion only through May 11th.
Okay, okay. And the PRA i- issue, you know, that's something we can deal with. Really the higher priority issue was the ability for you folks to be able to meet in a virtual environment, a safe environment, to be able to conduct the community's um, business. Um, also, um, you know, the state legislature is, is expected to have some kind of a special session um, based on their rules and such, highly unlikely that they'll be able to initiate it, which means that the governor is gonna have to call a special session. Um, what we are hearing is that um, that they're waiting for their estate revenue forecast, which is expected to come out out on June 17th. So that's kind of the latest. Um, Association of Washington Cities uh, did develop a a special session legislative priorities and uh, apparently their board met on Friday. Uh, the good news is some of our feedback and input that we provided, particularly in the area of tax improvement financing uh, did make the cut and um, is, is on, on, on that list. I've already been in contact with, with our legislative team and we'll can, we'll begin to reach out to our delegation to uh, communicate the importance of that. Um, highly unlikely that they'll be holding public hearings and such. Most likely, they're gonna get down there, be behind closed doors, what, do what they gotta do and then get back out on the floor and uh, make whatever um, changes and updates to the state's budget that, that they need to. Um, along those lines, uh, you might have seen that last Thursday, I believe it was, that um, uh, the Washington State Supreme Court um, did uh, uh, that the injunction that was on I-976 remains in place. And uh, so they're gonna take a further look at I-976 um, later, um, later this, later this uh, summer. So at this point in time, it's not taking effect, which means that people are, well, rather Department of Licensing is still collecting tab fees as they were. Um, but again, uh, to be determined in terms of what the, what the state, um, Washington State Supreme Court does in, in, in that environment. Um, also, uh, last week, um, our economic development team and our communications team, uh, you know, sent out via email and to chip mail and social media and such. Uh, just an update on all the various resources that are available to uh, businesses and, and things like that. Um, and so we'll, we'll continue to do that. They, uh, they hit it hard on a couple of occasions uh, last week. Um, also as part of the governor's uh, four-phase plan, he also um, introduced a COVID-19 risk assessment dashboard uh, that can be easily accessed either through the Department of Health or through the governor's office webpage. So if you haven't seen that, certainly something worth um, taking a, taking a look at. Um, I think as I've previously communicated, um, the state of Washington has allocated $300 million of their 1.6 billion for, from the CARES Act, from the federal government to local municipalities. Um, what that results in is the city of Lakewood being eligible for $1.79 million to be able to draw upon as it relates to COVID-19. That equates to $30 per capita. However, if you, as you've heard me say before, the not-so-good news is that we can't use it to backfill any lost revenue or supplant any existing budgets that we currently have in place. Um, I have uh, asked to pu- pull together a small team uh, to look at this and um, actually their first meeting is tomorrow. And uh, there could be an opportunity for the city, for you folks, as the mayor and the city council, to be able to use those monies in part and provide to, you know, the various human and social services agencies or uh, housing such as rent relief as well as additional business assistance. So we're gonna, we're gonna work on that here in the short term and I'm hoping to maybe have an update for you next Monday on that. Um, we're also waiting for the Washington State Department of Commerce, who's gonna be administering these monies, kind of what, what process that they're gonna put in place. But rather than waiting on them, I thought it would be prudent for us to take a proactive approach and just based on the federal guidelines, begin to look at what we could possibly do with those monies here and, and the Lakewood, in the Lakewood community. Um, I think as you all know, um, it's having a significant impact on our budget. Uh, we continue to practice the action strategies that have been put in place. Um, unfortunately, last week I had to uh, move forward with some temporary furloughs of uh, for individuals. We'll see the end of this month. Um, as we continue to look at the city's finances and again, again, I'm expected to have an update for you here in the very near future. Uh, probably more things like that coming, coming down the road. Um, so um, um, at the same time, I, I, I do believe that the silver lining out there is uh, for Congress to be able to take action, to be able to provide some financial assistance to local municipalities. Um, you know, we have been talking uh, with various folks who are involved in that and the feedback that we're, we're getting is that the next relief fund, the next stimulus package is expected to have assistance in there for local governments such as cities, towns, villages, and even, even, even counties. So um, hopefully uh, more, more to follow on that and uh, you know, we won't have to make such drastic cuts or elimination of programs or things like, things like that. Um, you know, we do continue to do the city's work. I um, was kinda joking a little bit with our team here. Um, we're really doing two jobs. You know, we're continuing to provide the services that our community has become accustomed to and expects. And then uh, we're also uh, you know, a, a key number of us are addressing the whole COVID-19 issue. Um, and um, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing both. Um, the uh, one of the, one of the key initiatives our Public Works Engineering Department took on is they did submit the grant applications for federal transportation funding to PSRC last week. And I know you're familiar with the projects, but uh, the continuation of improvements along Silicon Boulevard, a couple of overlay projects, one on um, Lakewood, I'm sorry, one, 100th from Lakewood Drive to Lakeview Ave, as well as South Tacoma Way from 96th to Silicon Boulevard. Um, also um, some design monies on 100th Street um, between uh, Lakeview and South Tacoma Way, which is kind of a key entrance into our downtown and our commercial area, as well as some design monies for um, Nyanza. And uh, lastly, some construction monies for the last phase of South Tacoma Way from 88th to, to 80th. So we did submit for the maximum six number of projects. Um, it's very, very competitive and uh, we'll, we'll see where we land and um, um, so more, more to come, more to come on that. We do feel that our projects are certainly very competitive across the board. Uh, at your next study session, uh, the Public Works Engineering Department will be in front of you providing you an update on the TIP. This is something that under state law annually needs to be done. And again, the primary reason to do this is so that we can apply for grant funds um, either locally, at the state level and of course federally. Um, we are gonna do things a little different this year in terms of how we plan on presenting it to you in the past. We've taken that document and we've redlined it. So rather than doing that, um, the presentation will include the current adopted TIP, so you have that. And then um, we're going, going to present three separate components. Um, so the first component will be all the additions to the TIP that are being proposed. So you'll see those very succinctly and kind of right there in one or two pages. Um, the second will be any modifications or updates to the existing TIP. And then lastly, any completed projects that need to be removed from the TIP. So rather than kind of flipping through and uh, it, it gets a little messy. And uh, so um, that, that's how we plan on presenting it to you, to you next, next week. Um, also, uh, you, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of city work going on out there. Um, you know, on the, on the transportation side, transportation and sewer side rather. Um, you know, you got Onyx, Silicon Boulevard, and then also um, a key water quality storm, stormwater project that's expected to get underway here in the very near future. Um, also, you know, on deck is uh, Veterans Drive and uh, so we're working with that contractor to identify when they wanna start on that project. And then at your next regular meeting, we expect to have um, for council consideration and potential contract award, um, a street lighting contract for 56 streetlights over in the Oakbrook neighborhood. Um, our annual chip seal and our annual pavement patching um, program. And then um, as we look out into next year, some of the other major transportation projects that we're currently beginning to work on on or actually are underway from a design standpoint is, you know, 111th and 112th um, over between Bridgeport and, and again, about Kendrick or so, the 108th Ave Overlay, uh, the Maple Street Sewer Project over in Tillicum. And uh, then the 100th and uh, Lakewood Drive Traffic Signal uh, project. So those are all uh, well underway. I'm also very pleased to note that the JBLM North Access Project, um, we hit 60% design uh, about a week ago, right on target. And so our goal and objective is to be at 100% by the end of June. Uh, we're also keeping a very close eye on the Office of Economic Adjustment in terms of when they plan on releasing either the grant application to be able to submit for funding um, through, through the, the federal program that, for example, our Congressman Denny Heck was able to um, um, obtain. And uh, so that is um, moving, moving, continues to move, move forward. Um, and then on the park side, um, at your next regular meeting, um, you know, presuming everything comes together, you know, things happen sometimes. Um, but bid openings are happening later this week on two major projects, the Harry Todd Park Project in the Tillicum neighborhood, as well as the Angle Lane south improvements to include the restrooms adjacent to the Off Leash Dog Park. And uh, so we hope to be able to also bring forward those two uh, contracts for council review and consideration as part of your next regular meeting. If not, certainly the one, the one after, the one after that. Um, so with that, um, that's my report, Mayor, and certainly if there's any questions. So with that, that's my report, Mayor, and certainly if there's any questions.
Questions for Mr. Caulfield. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, Mr. Caulfield, in the MSRC, AWC, we're putting out something about. They were concerned about and wanted cities to chime in regarding a proposed rule on paid family and medical leave, and there was a need to. For comments to be made this week, is that something that is a concern to the still Lakewood?
I haven't seen that, so I'd have to, I have to look into it.
There was something in the. The email that came out from AWC that that talked about a variety of things in the last couple of days.
Okay, well, we'll try and track that down, see if there's anything there.
Okay, and Councilmember Richardson. Sent out a, an email regarding the county's use of the. COVID nineteen dollars that the county had received. Asking for ideas, have we communicated with him what we'd like to see the county do with with their money?
Yes, we have, Councilmember, we asked that the county provide the city of Lakewood money so that we can maintain basic operations, however, we were told that. That's not what the monies can be used for, however, when the county council member did outline. The areas that that the county was looking at. Using the monies, for example, public health, resiliency, helping small businesses, things along those lines, I did express. You know, my support for that, and I thought that that was a good approach to be able to do that, and certainly if there's an opportunity for folks in Lakewood to be able to access that, we can help.
Hey, yeah, as long as anything that they do extends beyond the unincorporated areas.
Okay, thanks. Yep, that's right, yep.
I'm having an internet problem here. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go to council comments, Mr. Simpson.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only. Thought was in our meeting today on the consent agenda, we approved the minutes of the meeting where we had the. The presentation about the status going forward of our human services funding recommendations looking for twenty twenty one. And and those recommendations were kind of. Do what we've always done and and have all of that, and that conversation, as I recall it, we. Weren't real definitive or have a real strong consensus about what we were. Looking, looking to do, but I think that when we come back to that, or as we come back to that. This, we may be in a situation of where we might wanna change the philosophy, not of using one percent for human services. But of. Do we really want to keep spreading it so thinly amongst. As as many different priorities that they are, or do we want to take a look and ask to try to do something? That is a bit more targeted, but with some more robust chunks of. Chunks of money, and I guess I would just put that out there because that will be coming back to us at a future meeting. Is, and and I would think that we maybe want to not constrain ourselves to doing what we always do in that regard. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Farmer.
I was delighted today to hear from AWC that I was just appointed to their large city advisory committee. First meeting is on May twentieth, and I am excited to participate and represent Lakewood. That's it for me.
Mr. Volkey.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wayland.
Nothing other than I continue to listen in on the EDB chamber. Briefings that happened, we use three times a week today, Derek Kilmer, Congressman. Was online and he was discussing the PPP program and other government efforts to get more resources to the communities, so. Good information, if you have a chance to check into that, it's it's a good thing to listen to and opportunity to ask questions, other than that. Been a quiet week.
Well, on, thank you, on Thursday, I spent two plus hours in one of these meetings with. I guess it's SHAP, the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership, which is basically the mayor's and. County Councilman, Member Lattenberg and the county exec. And we've now got a good inventory of the variety of sources that are available within the county and cities for affordable housing. As far as funding goes and on our way to having a consultant to help us work on coordination. So that's gonna be interesting, not an easy problem by any means. And. Sunday I had the opportunity. I thought it was gonna get done before the rain, but last hour, or last mile and a half was in the rain, I have two and a half miles from. Entrance to Fort Stilica Park, so I walked over there and walked around the now clear Wahop Lake. It's the cleanest I have seen it, and we initially lived up, the first house in Lakewood was up the hill from it toward Lake Louise, and we used to take our. Toddlers who are now in their thirties down there to try to learn how to ride bikes, and. The only concern I had was not with the people, the people were behaving well. You know, in groups of twos, mostly families, it was well used, it was, there are goslings everywhere. And so they're, they're gonna re, re, resupply the phosphorus in the lake here real quick. I was thinking about putting them in a bag and taking them somewhere. But they're cute for now. And if there's nothing further. May the fourth be with you. We're adjourned.